Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk leads us in the pledge, please.
Pledge: I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Happy New Year to all of you. Our first order of business is the examination, alteration, and approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of January 8th, 2013 be approved as submitted? Questions, comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Approval of consent agenda? May I have a motion, please, that the board approve the following consent agenda? Approval of minutes of December 11th, 2012. Minutes of December 11th, 2012, as submitted. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. Acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes. Acceptance of the BOSI's Cooperative Bid for School Launch Paper and Plastic Supplies for the period January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2013. Accepted of the BOSI's Cooperative Bid for School Launch Five Compartment Trace for the period January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2013. Approval to dispose of unserviceable textbooks, media from Penfield High School. May I have a motion, please, that all of these items be approved under the consent agenda? Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Board members, before we move on to our next item, as you know, we have just approved the resignation of Mr. Gene Mankusoff. Gene, on behalf of the board, we would like to thank you for all your hard work here in Penfield. Your impact on the education of our students can be seen in all our buildings. You've worked really hard. It's been an honor and really just a privilege for us to work with you, watch you, you know, from the day when you started as principal and then become an Assistant Superintendent for Instruction for us, and see all the hard work that you have done. Congratulations on your position as you become the new Superintendent for HFL. So I still can't pronounce that. We're gonna have to work on this, and, you know, you will be missed. And, but we wish you good luck, and we look forward to seeing you in Monroe County, at Monroe County School Board functions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is Treasurer's Report. Attached to your agenda is the Treasurer's Report for the month ending October 31st, 2012. May I have a motion, please, that the Treasurer's Report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending October 31st, 2012 be approved as submitted? Any questions, comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Special reports: School Board Recognition. Ms. Karen Wilson. Thank you. Karen, we've received from New York State School Board Association a certificate for you for leadership department training, totaling 75 points of board leadership training. So, on behalf of the board and this community, thank you for the time. You are, you know, and the dedication that you are giving this community, our students, and our school board, we would like to present you with this. Thank you very much. All right. Next item is visitor's speaking time. Do we have anybody who would like to address the board? No, we don't. Our student representative is not available this evening. She is at a Nordic race. Do we have? No, we don't have a report from her. Okay. No. But thanks. She is at the Nordic race, I believe, so good luck to her and the whole team. And we move on to Superintendent's Report. Dr. Graham.
Happy New Year, everybody. We're gonna be looking at staff and student honors, and there are quite a few of them. As a result of the holiday season, it really shows the caring and the heart of Penfield and the Penfield students and teachers and administrators. Then we'll be looking at an energy efficiency grant, transportation clean air grant, budget communication cycle that I'll talk to you about. And Mark will be talking about the administrative budget proposal, and then I'll give you some feedback on the entry plan. Student staff honors. The Penfield School community participated in many holiday projects. We had the Penfield High School. The clubs joined together on a holiday food drive. National Honor Society held a gift-wrapping fundraiser and visited the Atria Senior Living. PHS Ambassador's Club and Secretary sponsored the Giving Tree project by collecting gift cards to help needy families. And PHS vocal students performed at a fundraiser to benefit victims of Hurricane Sandy and for the residents at the Bay Wine Senior Living Facility. At Bay Trail, they held their annual Mix It Up and Make a Difference days during lunches, featuring four collection booths. Donations were collected for water for wellness in Africa. There was a Giving Tree, a collection of gently-used winter wear, cards and letters for servicemen and women, and items for mothers in need. Annual Shopping Cart Wars, food drive for the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf. The 13th Annual Adopt a Snowman Project collected gifts to support children currently living in homeless shelter. And the Library's Giving Tree collected gently-used winter clothing for Saint's Place. And Marcia, I'm trying to remember, Bay Trail, the Shopping Cart Wars. Was it C? How C, I think it was. A. Oh, my goodness. It was A. I should have asked A. That's right. Made it exciting. For our elementary level, we had at Cobble, students visited the Elderwood Senior Care Facility to sing songs and present residence with holiday crafts. And first-grade students made decorations for children at Galisano Children's Hospital. In Indian Landing, annual Helping Hands Project, students and staff members collected food and monetary donations to help Indian Landing families in need. Students donated hats and mittens to the mittens tree to benefit needy families. And students and families participated in a coat drive to help families in need. At Harris Hill, students and staff members collected winter outerwear, clothing, games, and gift cards for the students of Harris Hill Sister School, Rochester City School District, number, school number seven. And students collected boxes, bags of stuffing for the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf and books for the Habitat for Humanity in November. And at Scribner, families and staff members collected food and donations for the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf. A donation was made to the Red Cross to help with Hurricane Sandy assistance. Fourth graders made fleece scarves and then purchased matching hats and mittens to be donated to the preschool program at Sister School Number 33 in Rochester. Just a brief mention there. When I watched them making the scarves out of the fleece material, it inspired me to go home and have that be an activity I did with my children at home, which I was cutting and tying and selling. So that was fun, so. Students collected gently-used clothing for Sister School Number 33. A fifth-grade class donated dinners at the Open Door Mission for Thanksgiving. And fifth graders made cards for children at Galisano Children's Hospital. In the district office, staff members collected clothing, school supplies, and donations for the Island Park School District, a Long Island district that was deeply impacted by Hurricane Sandy. It's good to take the opportunity to celebrate these, this type of giving. There were a lot of things that were happening in the fall before the New Year, and it gives us a chance to remember that and remember how the Penfield community and students and teachers responded to that. And they'll do so in the future, too, so congratulations to everybody who participated. And now, Mark Sensusi.
We just have a couple of brief updates on some energy efficiency and grant activities that have been going on in the school district. As you know, as part of Phase 5 of our ongoing capital project, which we're in the process of wrapping up right now, there was included boiler replacement at both Indian Landing and at Harris Hill. Mr. Cordero's in the audience today, but I just wanted to acknowledge him. He really took the initiative with regard to that project and applied. There is available, he searched out and applied for an energy rebate program through RG&E. We've received, as a result of that, have already, have received $36,000 in credit, not in credit, in cash, to the school district as a result of an application that he completed. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. And there's pictures of the old and new boilers, so I think, I think the work was well done as well. Also, tonight in the audience, and I'll ask them to come forward, are Gina Chopra and Jim LaForte of our Transportation Department. Would you mind coming to the table, Jim and Gina? You've met Gina before, but not, have not had the opportunity to meet Jim. I just wanted to give you a brief update tonight on a grant project that you've heard something about before. We brought to the board, well, it's nine months ago, I think, when we originally applied for a clean air, through NYSERDA Clean Air Grant. Mr. LaForte really took the lead on this particular application, but the grant was to replace electric block heaters in the district's buses. I'm gonna turn it over to Jim to just explain very briefly how that works, where we're at in the process of that project, and, and if there's anything else left to be done, so.
Thanks for having me here. What we have here is our grant. We applied for, as you said, in November of 2011, and we were accepted, and since November 2012, 30 of our buses have been retrofitted with a Obasto heater, which is a fuel, diesel fuel burning pump, as you can see in the picture there. The purpose of that is it, it starts early in the morning before the driver gets there. It is on a timer that we set. It starts up and it heats the bus up, the coolant that's in the bus, and circulates the coolant throughout the bus and brings the temperature of the bus up to a, about 155 degrees, the coolant in there, which makes the bus, allows the bus to start easier, as well as bringing the temperature inside the bus, because the coolant flows through the heater cores and throughout the front of the bus to the rear of the bus. The old-style heaters that were electric just heated the coolant in the engine. It didn't heat throughout the system. They work very good. We've had some pretty good feedback from our drivers in that. The newer buses that we have now have larger windows and that, and they warm the buses up a lot quicker and clear the windows and make it a lot easier. It also cuts down on the idle time, so the buses are no longer idling, and it's helping the environment, you know.
I also wanted tonight, since Jim and Gina were going to be here, there's another initiative that Jim will touch on, a small initiative, but I think important in terms of the safety of our students, and it really relates to pre- and post-trip procedures. So in your packet, we certainly are not gonna go through the, all the details of what those procedures are, but they are extensive in there, and the detail of that's included in your board packet. I'll ask for the public, Gina, to just go through very briefly how that work, that pre-trip process works.
Right. Every time a bus driver needs to take the bus from the bus parking lot out onto the road to pick up students, whether it be one time a day, twice a day, three times a day, it doesn't matter. Every time that bus leaves the lot, they need to go through this extensive pre-trip, and then when they return, post-trip procedure. I'm not, like Mark said, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but just to give you a brief overview of how it works is, in the morning, let's say, when they come in, so they approach their bus, they start scanning the outside of the bus, looking underneath it to make sure there's no leaks, wires hanging, or anything that should not be there. They'll get on the bus, they'll do an inspection of the interior, checking all their switches, their lights, their seats, their seat belts, the emergency doors, roof hatches, windows, gauges on the bus, fire extinguisher, first aid kit, body fluids kit. They'll check to make sure the inspection sticker is up to date and, you know, make sure the glass, you know, there's no cracks in any of the windows or anything. They'll turn on their lights, signals, red flashers, do a walk around the outside of the bus, make sure that all the lights are working, none of the lens covers are cracked or broken. Again, checking reflectors, wiper blades, everything. The wheels, making sure the lug nuts are tight, you know, there's no damage to the rims, caps of the bus. They walk around, they do the entire bus, they go back in the bus, turn on the other signal of high beams, and they check it all, the yellow lights, and they continue to do that. And they do that every single time that bus has to leave the yard. When they come back, at the end of each trip, they do what we call a post-trip inspection. And of course, the most important piece of that is they're checking to make sure there aren't any students left onboard, but they're also looking for any belongings that they may have left. They're making, checking to see if there's any damage to the inside of the bus. They buckle up their seat belts. They'll do a walk around the outside again, making sure that nothing happened to the bus while they were on the road. Again, making sure they don't have any headlights out or any damage to the outside of the bus. And then they'll go back in the bus, and at the end of the day, the very end of the day, when they park it for the night, that's when they'll actually, they'll buckle up all their seat belts, they'll fuel the bus, they'll sweep the bus, empty the trash. Again, you know, just making sure, and if they do find something that could be wrong, they either, they write it in their logbook, we give it to the mechanics, and then they make sure that it's repaired before that bus goes back out on the road again.
So that's relevant to tonight's discussion, and I'll ask Jim to talk about the wheel checks that we've just added this year for the first time.
What we do is we added an extra safety feature to the buses. Some of the drivers are, you know, a little bit stronger than others. They're able to turn the lug nut to check and see if it's loose or not. And the purpose of these are to give the driver a little bit more of a visual check. Sometimes the lug nut may be tight to feel, but it's not completely tight. And what happens is the little pointers there, they point at the, the next wheel check in front of it. And as you can see on the left-hand side, the loose lug nut. What that does is it turns. When the lug nut turns, it obviously gives it easier for the driver to glance at it and notice that there is a loose lug nut or something that needs to be addressed, and then they report it to us, so.
So we just wanted to point that out. I think the purpose of this was, I just noticed these today, actually, going down, as I was driving to Harris Hill. I was passed, I passed a bus on, on 441 and noticed the, the wheel checks. So I, the drivers, I wanted the board just to understand and hear about the process and for the public to hear about the process that the drivers go through each time. And it's to the department's credit, I think, that these, they sought out and have installed on all our buses at this point, these wheel checks, simply as another backup point so that drivers, you know, no matter what their hand strength, can be assured that those lug nuts are tight. Are there any questions about any of the transportation operation? I wanted this to be quick, but I did want to give you this opportunity to hear about it.
Board members, Kimya.
Oh, I just have a quick question. It says, "Make sure the WigWag is set." What's the WigWag?
That's when, when the drivers do their brake check as part of their pre-trip inspection. When air pressure is low, when it drops below 60 pounds per square inch, we have warning devices. The WigWag would be your visual. It drops from the windshield, and it just kind of swings there, and we have an audio alarm that buzzes. And then there's another red light on the dashboard that you will see also that tells you your air pressure is low, and when that happens, when that WigWag comes down or any of those other devices pop up, you put the bus in a safe position, secure it, and call the guys to come, because you've lost air pressure in your brakes.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank, thank you. Next is Budget Communication Cycle.
Okay, this next part of the report is to talk about the Budget Communication Cycle, which is a description of how we're going to communicate not only to people about the budget, but to receive communication back, and it's a reflexive process that occurs over the next four months. In terms of planning for that type of communication, it's not something where you want to just have it happen. Especially in a large organization like this, it needs to be intentionally planned to make sure that every voice, everyone has a voice and every voice is heard. And if you proactively design it and plan it and implement it, then you can be sure that it happens. There are many stakeholders when we're talking about developing a, a budget. We've got the Board of Education, the Administration, faculty and staff, association leaders, students, parents, community members, and leaders. So we have to make sure that those components are integrated into the communication cycle. There are many different communication opportunities for those stakeholders, and there are several new opportunities this year with this particular cycle. The new ones, well, we could start at the top. Senior Cabinet. We've got the Extended Senior Cabinet, that's new. School Budget Advisory Team, that's new. Board of Education Workshops and Meetings, you've had those. Superintendent Focus Forums is new. Conversations on Education. Student Leader Forums is new, and Reduction Analysis Feedback is new. The Senior Cabinet, and I'll go through and talk about each one of these briefly. The Senior Cabinet represents the most senior leadership in the district, and that's myself and three Assistant Superintendents, Business, Instruction, and Personnel. And this is kind of a rendering of that, and it's very strategic. We look at the decisions that need to be made, and we have a level of understanding about what, what needs to happen. The Extended Senior Cabinet is new. This involves the Senior Cabinet that I just talked about, and then the six principals. So the 10 together is an Extended Senior Cabinet. Very important to have a dialogue around the table. It's not just about the, the input, but it's about the dialogue that happens that creates a level of understanding among the people that are on that team. That also helps the Senior Cabinet, and myself specifically, to understand the true impact of budgetary decisions or the true need in terms of a needs analysis for anything that we might need to, to add to the budget. So that's what that looks like with a rendering. Information sharing, consensus building, reduction analysis, recommendations, some decisions. And I think also another latent byproduct of that is enhanced responsibility for the district-level decisions and district-level budget. When you're, when you're part of the decision-making, it increases your responsibility level. A School Budget Advisory Team, this is one of our, our new pieces. This is to involve faculty and staff representation from the six employee bargaining units. And when we look at that, we have the Senior Cabinet, and then we have the six employee bargaining units, representatives from each one of those, and the little wisps off the end are the people that are involved. Those aren't necessarily the numbers. What's important is, from the perspective of the leader of that bargaining unit, how many people, really, who needs to be at that table, listening to where we're at in that process, and what are their, what are their feelings about where we are, and what are their recommendations? And what should we need to know, and what do they need to know? So it's really about who, not necessarily the number of people. But I would anticipate there'd be at least two or three from each group and probably more from other groups. There could be over 20 people. There's board workshops and meetings. Some people forget about the, the board meetings. That's where most of the primary information comes out. So it's important to go back, either to watch on TV what the, is happening at the meetings, and it's also recorded on the website, too, so people can go back and look at them, especially when it gets close to the time where you need to really vote. There's also board workshops, where the board just has to spend a more significant amount of time looking at the granular level of the budget and the detail that happens, and to have that level of dialogue. There's a couple of those. Superintendent Focus Forums, this gives a chance, and I'm not sure exactly how often to have these, but mainly occurring in February or March, where people can come to a kind of a town meeting-style meeting to talk with myself and, and Mark, with anybody that wants to, as the process is going along. Conversations on Education, you've, you've started these. They can take a different format. It could become, "Here's some information." It could become, "Participate in small groups through an organized facilitated fashion" to get information back to inform our decisions. We're gonna add one more of those. We've got one at the beginning level, beginning of the process, and one toward the, toward the end of the process. And that could, could look like this. I've shown down at the, down at the bottom is one of the tables might look like having a student and a principal and a faculty member and a staff member and a parent and a community member kind of spread out in these heterogeneous groups around the room. And then there's tabletop questions and then discussion that would occur. And then this might be where the Board of Education might be circulating around, along with the senior staff, kind of as a teacher might do, as they're observing the dialogue that's happening in their small groups in the classroom, to get that flavor for what are people thinking and talking about. So it gives a good macro view for, for the board and, and senior leadership. We're gonna have two of those. Superintendent, Principal, and Student Forums. This would be assisted through Mr. Putnam, or Dr. Putnam at the high school, where we could meet with either any interested high school students, really, to learn about the school budget, some of the implications that might be facing the district in, in this particular year, but to give them a macro understanding of what, what is this all about, but then also some micro-level dialogue as well. It's a good opportunity for students. We could do that a couple of times. The other thing we're using internally at this point, we're looking at, when we talk about reductions, if they're needed, and they are, because we have a revenue problem in New York State. We've been dealing with it for the last four to five years. But with that, we need to organize a way how we collect information. And when we look at analyzing whether or not a reduction needs to occur, and we need more information on that, what we're using as an internal device right now is, is something called a Reduction Analysis Feedback Form. We're looking at the implications of a reduction, any additional action that might be needed to compensate for a particular cut, and any additional resources. Sometimes when we, we cut, especially when you're talking about staffing, then there's, there's other resources that are needed. And then possible positive opportunities. No one seems to fill that one out when you're talking about reductions. So, again, from the beginning, it started about, so that everyone has a voice and every voice can be heard, this type of intentionally planned cycle of communication that occurs and is exhibited on the calendar, and you can see the, it weaves kind of in and out, and each, each process informs you to the next iteration of communication as we develop over the next eight weeks. That's what, that does. That's the plan. One of the things that is missing from that plan right now, we're still not sure exactly what form it, it could or should take, would be the Budget Advisory Committee. So we're, we're gonna talk a little more about that over the next couple of weeks to figure out where that, that fits in this process, whether or not the conversations on education are enough for that community-level input and, and feedback. We're not clear, but whatever it is, we want it to be purposeful and meaningful, so that's how we will, we would design that. And that's it for this portion.
Any questions, comments, board members? All right. Thank you.
I'll turn it over to Dr. Sensusi. We'll talk about the administrative budget.
Good evening, again. So, the, tonight's presentation is the, as you know, on, on our calendar, the administrative budget. And we begin every budget presentation with a reflection of the, the district's goal. So our, our goal of academic excellence, expressed as improved student achievement partnerships in the district and fiscal responsibility. So it's important that we remember that this budget is the, a financial budget is a financial expression, a plan towards the implementation of those district goals. And the way that looks in terms of process tonight, this, called the administrative portion of the budget, but it covers lots of pieces, more than I think what you would just think of as administration, central administration, or the building administrators. It's really leadership across the district and a few other items. This is split up by the state's organizational system. So Board of Education is here, central administration, which includes Principals, the Principals' offices, support contractual items around those people, building administration, liability, insurance, board costs, and so on. That composes 7% of the entire budget. At the next Board Meeting later this month, we'll begin a conversation with Gwenda Buckman around the special area portion of the budget. So that includes staff development, special education, school counselors, nurses, psychologists, and school social workers. In February, we'll talk about the hard pieces, the buildings and grounds, transportation, debt service portion. March 5th, 31% of our budget is reflected in regular school instruction. So that's classroom teachers, K-12, occupational education, libraries, and so forth. BOSI's programs will be complete in March, and we finalize with benefits and begin really a complete budget review at the April Meeting with a goal of adopting April 23rd. So this is what that looks like in terms of, in a more visual sense, the largest section of the pie, as you can see, is classroom instruction. That special areas is the green block at 14%. Tonight, we're beginning small. We're early in the process, and so we begin with that Board, Central, and District Administration portion of the budget, 7%. The, I guess that's brown, sort of tan-colored slice of the pie. The total budget for that, the increase, proposed increase, for that component of the budget, all items that share is a total of 1.2%. It's about $5.7 million, increasing $67,000, $68,000. That's 1.2%. This is what that looks like by function. So while there's, I mentioned a lot of items. Obviously, not all of those items compose an equal portion of the budget. So this is what that looks like. The blue is this year, the red is next year. And in terms of that $5 million, these are the components of that. So you can, the Board, while certainly important to the leadership of the district, doesn't spend much money, and you don't get paid. So you're a very teeny portion of this. The largest portion, obviously, building administration, staff, and their contractual costs and supplies. By far, that is the largest section of the budget. Significantly, this year, we've had some staff changes and retirements. That's the, you'll see in a future slide, that's the majority of this budget, and really of all the schools' budgets. We're a people organization. It's really people, and the cost of folks that drives the budget. But you'll see, the bars there are actually almost identical. The building administration portion of this budget does not increase from year to year. It's essentially flat. Where the increases are, are sprinkled throughout the other smaller portions of the budget, one of the more dramatic ones being in school lunch, in that transfer. The district does budget a transfer from the general fund to school lunch to cover the costs of the retirement system costs, essentially, of that program. It's been a long commitment of the district that that shouldn't, that school lunch has to stand on its own by state law. It has to be, it's carved out separately from the rest of the organization of the school, and it's expected that the money that students pay, parents pay for meals, that the revenue from meals covers the cost of the program. It is independent. We do make that transfer to cover the retirement system costs of the employees, and that's going up. You'll see that elsewhere. This foreshadows, I bring it up and I point it out particularly tonight, because that's going to foreshadow the rest of our budget. As you know, you know, those costs are going to impact here. They're going to impact really throughout the rest of our general fund budget. If we split it up a different way, if we look at this budget differently, what does it consist of? Salaries for certified folks is the most of this. So this is administration, Principals, and that, and central administrators, those sorts of employees. So they form the majority of it. There are non-certified, secretarial support, clerical folks who are included in this budget, a very little amount of equipment, insurance dues and assessments. So, for example, included there would be the Board's, the district's membership in, say, School Boards Association, those kinds of things, postage, contractual. You see, those are relatively less consequential in the budget. The majority of this budget, again, salaries and benefits. In terms of significant changes, the increases in this budget are driven almost entirely by contractual salary increases by that ERS rate. I mentioned earlier that the total cost for building administration is remaining flat. You have a much more detailed, the Board has a much more detailed analysis and detail on the particulars of this component of the budget. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. I'd point out, though, that it does contain, one of the items that's going to put pressure on the building portion of this budget has to do with the APPR. So the Commissioner's Regulations do require the APPR, as you know, you've heard presentations previously, that there's a vast expansion in the number of teacher evaluations that are going to be required over the course of the next year. They will be done by the folks in this budget, by a not increased number of budget, I'm sorry, by a not increased number of employees. So the burden, this is, and I wanted to point out, another unfunded mandate. There's only a certain amount of people and a certain amount of time given, in any given day. And we've got a mandate that a significant portion of that time be spent in a particular way. So, you know, that, it is, you know, the hours in a day are a zero-sum game. So that's going to put, I think, pressure on the system as we move forward. I always, I end every one of these with the same comment, that, just a reminder of everyone that there's an end to this process. Sometimes it seems like budget goes on forever, but it really ends by May 7th and May 21st at the high school is our vote. Are there any, does the Board have any particular questions about any components of the administration budget? I do have some other information that I promised the Board, and that comes next, an update on where we're at with regard to tax cap issues and some, a little bit of long-range planning.
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments so far? Steve?
Mark, do you know off the top of your head what the going inflation rate is right now? It's in the high 2s, I think, or?
I think it's over 3. I think it's a little bit over 3. 3-point, I don't know exactly, but it's just barely over 3.
So, just comparing to that, the fact that, at least this portion of our budget, is only going up by 1.8% is a nice thing, that we're increasing by less than the rate of inflation, which is a good target.
It is. I think it's, obviously, we are increasing by the rate of inflation. That was probably more consequential in a time when they would pay the contingent budget cap to that rate of inflation. You know, we've moved beyond that now. So, to a much, the tax cap, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, has nothing to do, does not recognize the rate of inflation. So we'll need to do, continue to do better in each of these budget components if we're to make our targets around that.
Well, the, in our participating towns, are the assessed values of the homes adjusted each year, or is it only when they do a town-wide assessment that?
I believe that they, I'm not certain, so let me preface by saying that. But I believe that they adjust a portion of the homes every year. There is an obligation. They don't do a town-wide reassessment every year, certainly. That comes periodically. But they do touch a portion. I can get you more details on that, and would be, probably should do that.
Where it's going is, in an ideal situation, if the property values go up with the rate of inflation, then so do our revenues.
That's not quite true, though. They don't, property values don't reset quite that smoothly, or?
Because of the way assessments are done.
Cracked.
Yes. But over, I mean, again, just using that as a benchmark, rough numbers, our revenues do go up as a result of assessments going up. And so if our expenses went up at a rate comparable to that, we would never be increasing our tax rate, because our expenses are going up the same amount as our revenues.
That's an interesting point. Let me think about that, though, because I'm not sure that's entirely true. So that revenues, and I think we should say for people who are listening, to be clear about this, so the levy is the total amount that we collect, expressed as a dollar figure. It never varies. How we collect that is a rate per thousand. So that's a mathematical calculation that gets applied to the assessed valuation of each, of everybody's individual home, of the whole town, spread throughout all our towns, and then ultimately to everyone's house. So I pay on my home based on the, you know, an expression of dollars per thousand. So as assessed valuations rise, and if the tax rate stays the same, then it does generate more dollars. But really, it all links back to that levy. So it's whatever decisions got made that, so if you don't raise the levy and assessments rise, the rate goes down.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, you need to, I think, I think we need to be clear about all three moving parts as we have the conversation, I guess.
I'm saying, in an ideal world...
The county, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but the one point where it has gotten, that conversation has gotten, I think, somewhat, some press, is the, as you know, the county government has made the claim that they haven't raised taxes. In fact, what they've done is they've frozen the rate. So as assessments go up, they do collect more on their levy, you know, but they haven't raised the rate.
And they also increase fees.
Yeah, it's a little different conversation, but also true.
No, but if, again, in an ideal world, if our increase in our budget was, matched the rate of growth in the grand lot list, the assessment of all the homes in the area, then our tax rates would stay the same.
If everything, if all revenues in the budget increased at that same rate. So 60% of, about 60% of our total revenue stream is property taxes. So if the budget increased at the rate of inflation, and homeowner, home values increased at that same rate, we'd also need that remaining 40% to increase, or it's not going to balance.
Right, state aid, yeah.
Right, exactly. State aid primarily. And that hasn't been increasing at that same rate. Actually, this is a great lead-in, because the, this next series, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it with the other questions. I apologize.
An unfunded mandate, since it's got its own slide, and it's getting its own required section of our local budget, do you have a number that you're going to assign that and let us know?
It's a mandate at this point. There's going to be other costs in terms of training and so on, that I do not have a specific number for you. In terms of the real impact in the short term, it's a cost in terms of, it's an opportunity cost. It's lost time for all of those Principals who had busy lives before, and now are going to spend a significant portion of their busy life doing this. The cost won't go up. A doll, in terms of a dollar amount, you know, that piece of this mandate doesn't get expressed as, doesn't get expressed as dollars, because the Principal will still make his same salary. What it really, I think, the real impact will be, there'll be other impacts. There will be costs in terms of training and so on. But I think more significantly, the real impact will be that opportunity cost, the phone calls not returned, the kids not seen, the other work not done. Because in a day, there's only so many hours and so many minutes, and we've expanded a mandate for those Principals, telling them that you must spend an increased, a greatly increased portion of your day doing this.
And in getting to this point, though, we spent significant, what I would consider significant dollars to send petting back and forth.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Is there a dollar amount?
Not one that I have off the top of my head. We could generate more.
I just wondered, what it cost us to play, basically.
I can tell you that today, Bill and I met to go over the Race to the Top Funds, and I told him he could apply a 100% of those costs to my salary, because, quite frankly, what I've done since October is APPR. So there's no other, there's been no curriculum reports, there's no curriculum updates, because we've been focused on one initiative, because, quite frankly, the consequence was in the millions if we didn't hit the target.
Right.
And I think that that number's way under what we should have been reimbursed. So that $35,000 didn't go very far.
Thank you.
Jan, you have a question?
Well, we just, Monroe County School Board's estimated, for the Monroe County Schools, it's in excess of $2 million so far that we've all spent on APPR. So, it's going to get bigger.
And as we move forward, there probably, for some districts, and possibly for Penfield, there will be a real cost as we have to increase administrative staffing. I think maybe you're foreshadowing that a little bit, too. But at some point, maybe not in this budget cycle, but it's, the dam is going to break, and there weren't enough hours, and too many things fell through the cracks. And I think that at some point, there will be additional administrators because of the observations required, possibly.
Possibly.
Any additional questions, comments? Right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. The second half of this is less specific, more general, to the overall financial health of the district. And it's a projection. It's a very broad projection that I want to use tonight to talk a little bit about, essentially about mandates, about the tax cap, and about choices that we'll be faced with in the future. It's, I want to emphasize that it's estimates. It's based on broad chunks of our budget forecasted forward. It's not, it's not, it is not necessarily our fate. It's not, you know, it's not a, this is not intended to be perfect. It's intended to be, to give us a direction. It's, the intent of it's to use historical data, a set of assumptions, to try to project into the future overall sustainability of the system. So what revenue do we have? What funding do we have to work with? What do we need to do to maintain our program? And then the difference between those two. So I did use some guiding assumptions. This is also a little bit of foreshadowing. We're in the second year of our property tax cap. When I last spoke to you at the last meeting, we didn't have really enough information to be able to make a projection. But there are some things we do know. We do know that we're allowed to carry over, that the cap, and I find myself constantly doing it as well, the 2% tax cap, which has very little to do with 2%, and yet we keep reinforcing and repeating that. There is 2%, is one component of the calculation. It's not the only component, and there are lots of pieces. There's seven or eight steps of this process, a formula that each district needs, each school district, each town, each municipality needs to go through in the calculation. We do know, however, oh, I should have corrected this slide. When I wrote this, the tax-based growth was unknown. It is known at this point. In fact, I've got slides on it. Last year, there was a tiny adjustment allowed in the calculation for ERS contributions. There'll be no adjustment this year, but there'll be a significant adjustment allowed for TRS contributions. I'm not sure how that calculation's going to work, but I did do some estimates for this purpose. And we're allowed to carry over a portion of last year's cap. On our website, this is still, I believe, on our website, Nancy, the slides on how that cap works. So for folks who want more detail, there's a couple, although the print's tiny, it's because there's lots in it, a calculation, or a display of how that calculation actually works. it's because there's lots in it, a calculation or a, a display of how that calculation actually works. Last year, you'll recall that one of the major components is the tax-based growth factor. And Steve, this is, I wanted to get to this slide because this is relevant to what you brought up just a moment ago about a rate of growth in assessments. This is not that. So what this is intended to represent is the growth in assessment in each of the schools in the county of real bricks and mortar new growth. So every year, our assessment grows a little, our, the assessed valuation, the total value of all the properties in town grows a little bit. And it grows for two reasons. Your house was reassessed. It used to be worth $100,000 and now it's worth 110 or 120. That's growth. That's growth in the assessed valuation. But the other piece is a vacant lot now has a new building on it. And that new building has assessed, the value of that new building is also a component. This is intended to separate that. And last year, with the exception of Spencerport, Penfield led the league in the county in new bricks and mortar construction. So you can see this, this origin extends a little bit. It can't be less than one. So East Rondiquet, at the farthest right portion of this, actually had no growth, no real new bricks and mortar growth. Spencerport had over one point, almost one point, almost 2% growth, rather. Penfield, though, had very significant growth. I mentioned there was a teeny adjustment allowed last year for, for the ERS contribution. It was virtually insignificant. Also changes, there's changes in the calculation based on changes in pilot and so on. But the majority, the, the main driver really for us last year was that growth in assessed valuation. That resulted in a tax levy limit, which then turns into a maximum allowable levy of 3.14%. So last year, the difference between those two numbers is the tax levy limit is before exemptions. So I mentioned there was a, a tiny amount of ERS or TRS exemption allowed. That's the difference. It's the difference between 3.05 and 3.14 is the value of that, last year's TRS exemption. This year, that spread will be wider, the spread between a tax levy limit and a maximum allowable levy. All said and done, last year, the, the most the district could have increased its levy by, without requesting a supermajority vote. So there's no cap, but there is a trigger around us, around whether you need a 50%, the traditional 50% plus one to pass a budget, or a supermajority, 60%. Last year, that trigger for Penfield was 3.14%. Our adopted levy was 1.63%. And that turned into a final tax rate in Penfield of 1.17. So that, I think, those are some of the moving parts that, that we talked about earlier. The, the district could have adopted and requested permission to increase their levy at about 3.1%. 1.6 was, was the approved levy. And that turned into a rate of 1.17%. How is that? Growth in the assessed valuation between the adoption of the levy and, well, ba, from year to year, generated that difference. So the final rate, and this is true for, that rate is also true for all the Monroe County towns. We have, the two towns in Wayne County were slightly less than this. So it is fair to say that for all our taxpayers, the bill would have gone up 1.2% unless there were other changes in your assessed valuation. This is this year, and this is what that levy increase looked like, rather, compared to all the other towns in the county. So we, our levy increased less than virtually all of the other, the levy, the total amount that we collected, less than all but two of the towns, uh, school districts, I'm sorry, in the county. This is what that looks like in terms of the history. That's consistent with our recent history. You see, we've had tax, our levy increases, not like, not rate, not rate, but levy increases, the amount we collect has increased from nothing in 11, 12, tie of 3%. But we've had the, most recently, a half percent, eight tenths of a percent, 1.6%. So our increases have been much less than the rate of inflation in each of those years. This is the new information. You knew that, but this is what you didn't know. This is where we're at for a tax-based growth factor for this year. So last year, we were second highest. We're still actually above the average. I'm sorry? Oh, who we're next to? Webster? Oh, and Honeybee Falls. And we beat Honeybee Falls. Thank you. As we'll continue to.
Yes, you will. I'm still employed here for a little while.
The, so we're, we, we are above the county average, again, for this year. And we're, and our, our tax-based growth factor is, what is that? Fifth highest, I guess, in the county. Now, it's consequential because at this point, it's starting to roll together. It begins to add up. So we're allowed to carry over the, the levy limit that we did not use from last year. A, a portion of it, not all, but a portion of it from last year into this year, will also get the benefit of the tax-based growth factor. Our pilots, because they're so small, we don't really have a lot of commercial development in the, in Penfield, as you know. And so our pilot payments are relatively small and don't move this number quite a lot. So based on what I know right now, in terms of guiding assumptions, in terms of possible revenue, our es, my estimate of next year's cap's 5.6%. So, which would be, you know, if you'll recall the slide of our history in the last four years, quite a bit more than what we've asked for. I am not suggesting that we'll be asking for 5.6% at all, not suggesting that. But that's, I think, what the, what the 2% cap is going to turn into for Penfield because of, because of that growth in assessed valuation in the, in the district, the real bricks and mortar growth. And the rationale, I think, that the legislature and the governor's office used for including that is that districts should be able to benefit from real new growth. Not from the change, not from a taxpayer who's now just paying more, but somehow that as, that the calculation should recognize that new growth in a school district shouldn't be something that they are forbidden from, from including in the calculation. So beyond 5.6 for next year would require the supermajority vote. But this is, I'm gonna be talking in just a bit about a five-year projection of revenues. And so for future years, what I included, I, I did use 5.6% as a, as an estimate for this year for illustration purposes. And then I included 2% in the future for that calculation. Because I don't think we can count on, this is sort of a, certainly last year, I think, was unusual. I don't think we can count on that continuing. And what we know is that 2% is the reliable portion of the calculation. There's some other things we need to talk about and, and keep in mind as we look at our future in terms of revenue. We know that sales tax is gonna decrease, not for this budget we're building, but for the next budget, I'd estimate a $350,000 decrease in that because the, the Fair Plan repayment expires. State aid, for my assumptions, as I built this model, I assume that state aid's gonna decrease fairly significantly for '13, '14. We'll know lots more about that in the next two weeks. Tomorrow will be the governor's State of the State presentation. That kicks off the state's real budget cycle around school aid. He'll have, I don't, we don't know what it is. I don't think, outside of the inner circle at the state, no one does at this point. But it'll, the, the broad outlines of it'll be unveiled tomorrow after State of the State. He'll present it. And then a few, more information will come out. Usually, state aid runs the week after. I'd guess about Wednesday, we'd start to see some more information on, on what, on, on what that'll contain for us. Lots of concern, obviously, because of the state's running behind in terms of budget. And, you know, because of the impact of the hurricane and of just generally declining, revenues declining a little bit faster than they'd anticipated. But we know for us, no matter what, that our conversion aid will expire, that building aid will change and reset. So for, so I took, I made an estimate, just a rough estimate, of what those impacts would be. And then I said, well, for the future, state aid increase 2% a year. That's what that looks like. So buried into that, into these bars, because, I mean, this is $80 million. So we don't see lots of, you know, those changes, you don't see lots of movement. 2% increases in the levy, 5% in one, in the first projected year. And then a steady, fairly steady, but very modest march upward based on state aid and the, and 2% on the levy. On the expenditure side, I assume status quo. I didn't add pro, new programs. I, I didn't propose that we eliminated any significant services. I didn't try to estimate any new capital projects for which we would issue debt. I assumed that salary increases stayed around 2% in future years. As you know, some of our, our units have contracts that go out for the next few years. Several of our units have contracts that end at the end of this year. I just estimated overall at 2%. Utilities, while they're variable, I just walked forward based on, on current history. The retirement system is the cost that most drives this. And, and what I did there was an increase of 2.5% a year for the next five years. 2.5% on the rate, not on the total dollars, but on the rate that we spend, and marched that upwards. That, that gets the TRS rate at a rate higher than we've seen in, in recent time, but it's consistent with what the rates have gone up the last couple of years. I, I think, over time, that'll start to moderate. But just for now, based on recent history, as I say, I march it, and ERS up at 2.5% on the rate per year. As you can see, that drives dramatic increases on, in the expense. The, the benefits bar in the middle, that sort of burgundy color, grows fairly dramatically. That's driven by 10% estimated increases in health insurance and those increases in retirement system costs. You see, our salaries, while they increase, increase much more modestly than that. And all the rest of the budget, those bars are, you know, all the components that you see there. So debt service, inter-fund transfers, supplies, equipment, they don't really change much. And even when they do, they're not a, they're not the lion's share of this budget. Salary and benefits are over 60% of our budget. And when you, and the benefits portion of that, retirement and health, are, I'm projecting to increase dramatically. So that's our fiscal reality. You've seen this slide before. Expenses increasing, revenue decreasing. And so we began to use reserves. The model that I'm gonna show you uses, begins to use, we've been using some reserves over the last couple of years. We'll begin to use them more and lean on them more. So I, I projected forward increased uses of the retirement contribution reserve and debt service fund over the next seven years. I spread it out over seven years. And the bus purchase reserve, our plan was to deplete, deplete that in 10 years. So this is consistent with that. All of those are variable. We can make different decisions. We will, probably, I think, make different choices as we move through budget cycles. But just for the purposes of, of conversation, that seemed like a reasonable place to begin modeling. And if I put it together, this is what that looks like. That the, the revenue and expense lines, and it's, and it's really makes sense if you think about it, are, we're going to be driven by retirement system in the near future. Retirement system and health insurance costs will work to moderate some of those. But obviously, those changes are slow and difficult. So what you see is our history is we've ended, as you know, over the course of the last, or typically have ended with revenues exceeding expenditure in some greater or smaller amount. For next year, if, if my estimates were all correct, we haven't built a budget yet. So just based on those broad categories, we would still end positive. But then we, the, those costs, the increasing costs begin to catch up with us. This doesn't include any of those, you know, we talked earlier about the exemptions, for example, for retirement system costs. I'm walking it up at 2%. So there's lots of pieces of this that, where we would make different decisions as we go along. But I, I think that's, what I wanted to point out here was talk a little bit about the tax cap, the components of that, and how it all begins to fit together. It's, this isn't destiny necessarily, but it, I, what I wanna do is sort of set the stage for the, what the difficulties are gonna be in this budget and, and ones in the next in the near foreseeable future. That's the, the economic challenge that we face. One of the things that the governor's budget is gonna talk about, or I think the governor will talk about in his State of the State tomorrow, I hope. I've heard rumor that there will be conversation about mandate relief. I'm very curious to see what that looks like because that's the other piece of this promise. The governor and the, and the state legislature committed to a property tax limit, but they also said at the time that that would come paired with mandate relief. That simply hasn't happened. The Mandate Relief Commission reports so far have been pretty thin, I think, in terms of real mandate relief. And so I think the, certainly, I know School Boards has done a very good job of continuing to emphasize that. And, and I hope that some of that pressure will be recognized in, in the next couple of weeks. We'll have to see. Every, you know, this is like cutting, cutting, you know, my, you know, your mandate is my, is my commitment. So it's, it is not, it is politically very difficult, but I think it's gonna be, it has to be necessary. Or, or the school gets caught between those conflicting, between those conflicting forces. Any questions? Is there anything that I could explain, do better?
Steve?
It's more of a comment than, than a question, that, you know, the slide you had there that showed our surpluses becoming increasingly large deficits is very telling, certainly. And in the private sector, we would describe this as an unsustainable business model. And in fact, I, I think that's an accurate description of what we have. And while mandate relief will help a lot, while many of the other things that we have done here in Penfield and other districts have done has helped to adjust this, it's not, none of these things are going to change the direction. The model has to change. We need something drastic.
That's exactly right. And this, you know, I, this model uses reserves. We can use more. But, but the problem is the forces underneath that, you know, in any given year, we don't have to have a disaster, but every year will be difficult. And every year, we will be forced to make more and more and more choices. And there is a limit to that. There are districts in the state right now who have reached that limit. They have cut every, you know, there's a district in the state right now where the, the State Education Department has directed them to pay their BOSI's bill because their solution to that model was, well, that's a bill we just won't pay. You know, that's a model that doesn't work in our, you know, we know how, you know, we all know how that works in our own home lives. And really, for school, it's not that much different. You, no, that's not a choice you get to make. You, you have to pay that bill. The state's telling them that. The fact that they thought that that was maybe something they could do is, you know, that, that's, has the whiff of desperation about it. And, and for that particular district, that's where they're at. I think that over the course of the next, hope, you know, we'll see some of it in this budget cycle. You know, our history in New York State's been that this kind of change happens very slowly. But I think this model, a model like this, isn't... But I think this model, a model like this, isn't different for any district across the state. We all have those, you know, retirement system costs are very real for all of us. And I think what's happening is, we're seeing more about it. I think in terms of public understanding of this, it's, it's working its way through, but it's, you know, it'll, it is going to be difficult and slow. And it is unsustainable. That's the perfect word for it.
John?
Not a question, but a kind of a comment, because we, you know, we've been talking about our own fiscal cliff. But I heard that the governor may address tomorrow in his State of the State, the fact that, you know, as Mark alluded to, there's 150 school districts just in the North Country that in the next 24 months are going to reach that stage where they have nothing left. So there will be models out there, and there will be discussions that ultimately, we will see sooner than later, that hopefully will bring about some resolve on mandates, because you're going to have a lot of uproar when you talk about, even though it's a large area, 150 school districts. So they're hopeful that he'll have some comment on that tomorrow.
Thank you, John. Any other questions, comments? Camille?
I'm just wondering if, moving forward, I noticed on the tax-based growth factor charts, there were two tables, and they listed the names of the towns, but then you don't list the names of the towns on the county comparison. And I just know that if we're at a conversation in education, you throw that slide up there, people are, and you only list Penfield, and all the other districts are listed as A through M. I just think there's a natural curiosity to know, what are the other districts? Because we read about other districts in the paper, and then it sort of helps inform, well, that's why their, their budget didn't pass, or that's why it's, so it's, I know you don't like to put the names there, but it's inconsistent. And I think, I just, I would like to see the names on all the slides, if you have them on some of them.
Thanks. It is, I was inconsistent. The, the, and that's my fault. It's my, I own that inconsistency. And I guess what I would say is, that my, I, my preference would be that I would probably should not have included the names of the other towns in the tax rate growth factor. I think it's relevant. I think the data where Penfield stands is the relevant piece. I, you know, I don't, I feel that it's not my job to call out other school districts and talk about their tax rate. That's their issue. So I, I guess my, with your permission, my preference would always be to not include other towns. I mean, Penfield, we haven't, we want to talk about where we're at. It's those comparisons, I don't think I...
Well, we do it on the student instruction side, though, too, so I just, it's just something to think about moving forward. Are we, if we're comparing ourselves to other districts in some measures, why wouldn't we compare them in other ways?
I understand.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mark.
Okay, coming back out front. At the last board meeting, I talked about an entry plan, and what I was doing in terms of interviewing people, getting to know Penfield as part of the entry process of being a new leader in the district. And I'll briefly go back over that process. But then, the important piece is, what is the feedback that I found after talking to so many different people? So I've put a title on this, we had purpose, process, people, plan. Now here's the feedback. So again, the purpose, briefly, was to get to know the district and the people outside of the daily context of what a superintendent would normally do. So you have to, there's extra time involved and focus about finding out what are those key issues, and try to find what are the norms of, how are things done in Penfield? To get an assessment of what the culture is like, how is it responsive to change? What are the, what are the things to avoid? What are the things to pursue? Priorities, expectations, build trust and learn. So through that process was the personal interviews, briefing sessions, meetings, surveys, the informal conversations, and some of the district documents that you have. The people that were involved were the Board of Education, administration, faculty and staff, association leaders, students, school-related organizations, community leaders. And in October, November, that was gathering the data, sharing, early learning at the Conversation of Education in November, and then looking at the data, integrating the personal interview material into those initial findings. In the feedback survey, it was a public survey on the website, we, I looked at the three strengths, top three issues, any ideas for improvements, and expectations of the superintendent. So areas of strength for the district are, we have a conscientious, caring, and competent faculty, staff, and administration, we're structured to meet the needs of each child along the ability continuum, from the most needy to the highly gifted. And there are broad opportunities to develop the whole child through music, athletics, and clubs. Other areas of strength are the outstanding facilities, great teachers, caring, hardworking, the engaged students and parents. Overall, quality of education and culture is very good, and an excellent regional and statewide reputation. Some of the top issues in Penfield, maintaining focus in the midst of state-level changes, the annual professional performance review, APPR, and the Common Core Learning Standards, CCLS, the new curriculum and assessments that'll be coming. Implementation fatigue and stress. So with all of the changes in the Common Core, changes in how you're getting evaluated, there's lots of implementation that's happening that causes stress and some fatigue. Maintaining quality teaching and learning in the atmosphere of high-stakes testing, so the pressure to test more, that can affect the quality of teaching and learning. Hiring great teachers, the future workforce, is an issue. Implementation of the Common Core and the APPR, some of these coming up repeated times. Funding the current program, given the poor economy right now. District redesign considerations, the elementary attendance zones, shared services with other districts. And following our policies and regulations. More top issues, maintaining fiscal responsibility, providing meaningful professional development, the academic performance of students with disabilities and special education needs, and having clear strategic communication. So those were the top issues that were presented. Improvement opportunities, meeting the needs of average students, enrichment program fidelity and alignment, fidelity of implementation, that would be. Communication with partners, internal and external. And going from good to great. So we're very good, how do we get to great? Are we good enough? Preserve. Preserve the quality of education for the whole child. The current positive culture in the district and community, providing opportunities for all children, music and sports programs, the mental health staff, and the low class size. Those are things people are saying, preserve these things. Preserve the continuum of opportunity for all students, the property values, opportunities for families, a new sense of pride, and the synergy between parents, teachers, and students. Some of the expectations that the people have of the superintendent, continue Penfield traditions and create an even more balanced and enriched atmosphere for students of all abilities and interests. Listen to all stakeholders, make decisions in the best interest of students. Be trustworthy, honest, and responsive. Be a good community partner. Provide support, direction, and leadership. Connect with staff, students, parents, and the community, and effectively implement the state initiatives. Be collaborative and open to suggestions. Stay real. Keep a sense of humor. Stay informed and seek input and dialogue with the Board of Education. Be visible and understand what is happening by talking with parents, staff, and the community. Hold all staff accountable. Continue to ask good questions. And I think that was, might have been a student that input that into the survey. They expect snow days. So based on that feedback, and there's a lot of other things I would be doing based on that, but I will be making decisions based on what is in the best interest of students. I will be an excellent listener and communicator. Continue to build a foundation of good leadership based on, of, on interpersonal relationships based on trust, which was, I see as the aggregate of character and competence and empathy combined. Facilitating positive change, supporting principals and teachers amidst the implementation of the new Common Core Learning Standards and the Evaluation System, the APPR, and foster a climate of high expectations of success for each student. One of the most powerful indicators that we can, we can control, our expectations. Be an instructional leader that supports a learning organization. Support continuous improvement by focusing on results and what they are a function of, the antecedents of excellence. What are we doing that's causing the excellence, and focusing on those. Measuring progress frequently to improve student performance and the instructional program, and hiring quality people and developing the abilities of the existing staff. I need to model collaborative leadership by involving students, teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and the Penfield School community in decision-making process, and in general. Be visible and accessible to all stakeholders, and be a lifelong learner every day. A lot of those components that I just added in what I will do, and I changed a few of them, were part of what I felt make a good, makes a good leader in an organization. So of those things, I pulled those that I think are tailored and corresponding to the needs and issues that were presented through that process. And I wanted to publicly thank everybody for the time that they have given me and continue to give me throughout the process of integrating into the, into the community.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? All right, well, thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
And that brings us to the conclusion of Superintendent's report. We are now starting board business. Board members, we are on page four of your agenda. Facilities. We have a series of change order regarding the capital project. May I have a motion, please, that the change orders listed in your agenda on page four, five, and six, and that have been reviewed by and are supported by Architects Kurt Dull, Project Manager Gary Hoffman, Clerk of the Works Jim Cordero, and Assistant Superintendent for Business Marks Sussi be approved as described?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. There is an additional change order regarding the kindergarten bathroom, District Office Capital Project. May I have a motion, please, that this change, that those change orders for the cap, for, I'm sorry, for the kindergarten bathrooms and the District Office Capital Project that have been reviewed by and are supported by Architect Victor Messelli, Project Manager John Morrison, Clerk of the Works Jim Cordero, and Assistant Superintendent for Business Marks Sussi be approved as listed in your agenda?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Financial items. Single audit report. Copies of the single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2012, have been provided to the Board of Educa, to Board of Education members by Mr. Ray Wager, CPA, for your review. Those persons responsible for areas covered by the audit have also received the report. The report is positive and unqualified, as in prior years, there were no material instances of non-compliance or questioned costs. The report has been reviewed and accepted by the Audit Committee at their December 13th, 2012, meeting. Assistant Superintendent for Business Dr. Sussi is present here tonight to answer any questions you might have, but let's start, please, by putting a motion on the table. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education accepts the single audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2012?
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments? Steve?
Thank you. Congratulations on the comment. Catherine and I sit on the Audit Committee, and I have to report back that on this report, as well as the next one, we're going to deal with the extra classroom report. Ray Wager, who conducts audits for many, many school districts, explained to the Audit Committee that ours were among the best of all that he has done. And I think that's worth pointing out publicly, that we really do a very, very good job of monitoring processes and keeping track of our expenses and being sure that we are, in fact, showing due diligence in the expense of public funds.
Thank you, Steve. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Extra Classroom Activity Funds Financial Report. The annual independent audit report of the Extra Classroom Activity Funds prepared for the Board of Education by Mr. Ray Wager, CPA, has been reviewed and accepted by the District Audit Committee at their December 13th, 2012, meeting, and has subsequently been provided to the Board for review. The audit contains statements for the year ending June 30th, 2012. A corrective action plan for all concerns noted in the audit accompanies the report. Assistant Superintendent for Business Dr. Marks Sussi is present here to answer any questions that you might have. At this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education accepts the Extra Classroom Activities Financial Report for the year ending June 30th, 2012?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, I do have a question. It says in the report, on page six, inactive clubs. As indicated on the statement, the following clubs were financially inactive during 2011, 2012 fiscal year, and one of the ones listed is the ski club at the high school. This is a very alive club.
It would, it would mean that it was inactive in terms of financial, so, for example, fundraising or funds, expenses in and out of the, not that the club itself was inactive, so they would only look at transactions in and out of the club. That club, I believe, I would have to look into it a little more carefully, carefully, and could do so for you, but they've been, you know, they arrange for their fees, their lift tickets and so on, and pay those directly, so it doesn't go through the club, so you don't see that financial activity, and that's why you wouldn't see that.
Okay, I should have remembered that. All right, well, thank you for clarifying this. All right. Any other questions, comments? No? All right. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Acceptance of the Controller's Audit. The state constitution and the general municipal law assign the state controller the responsibility of oversight of the fiscal affairs of local governments, including schools. This oversight responsibility is primarily exercised through the division of local government and school accountability. One part of this agency's responsibility is to periodically examine the affairs of local governments. These examinations are intended to provide information to local officials so that they can perform their financial stewardship responsibilities effectively. Penfield was notified in late December 2011 that it would be part of a multi-agency audit. The actual audit began in early January 2012. This particular audit examined the security of personnel, personal, private, and sensitive information in mobile computing devices for the period January 1st, 2010 through May 4th, 2012. The auditors reviewed the district's policies and procedures to identify the controls established to protect PPSI. They also selected and reviewed a sample of mobile computing devices. The report was, was released on December 14th, 2012. There were audit findings, and the district's corrective actions are detailed in your agenda. At this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education receives the report of examination of the New York State Controller and adopts the corrective action plan described about, in your agenda?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Policy Review. Second reading and possible adoption. Policy 1650, Submission of Questions and Propositions at Annual Elections and Special District Meetings. May I have a motion, please, that policy 1650... May I have a motion, please, that policy 1650, Submission of Questions and Propositions at Annual Elections and Special District Meetings be approved as reviewed?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Have you received any comments from the public about it?
No, we, no, we have not. We did make the two corrections that we discussed at the last board meeting, which was, the board had decided that the appropriate, the appropriate length of notification was 60 days, so it reflects that. And then there was language in the previous draft that had to do with when a proposition might be rejected by the Board of Education, it had said, "for other good cause." We amended that to read, "or for another legally valid reason," which was the intent of that good cause language. So we made those two corrections. We have not received any, any public comment.
Thank you. Mark? All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Proposal to begin a club. Request to begin a club which requires fundraising has been received from Penfield High School. Details including objectives, activities, et cetera, are outlined in the proposal provided to the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please, that the Penfield High School Habitat Chapter Club proposal be approved?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Steve?
I think it's great to get involved with Habitat. I think it's a wonderful organization, and I've been a part of it for years. I was, I was curious, though, as to exactly what our students would be doing, because I know they have pretty strict rules about needing to be 18 to do the vast majority of, of tasks. Relatively few that you can do under the age of 18. Is there some other role that our students will be involved in?
Is this, she's a biology teacher, though. I thought it meant Habitat, like, and in, like, I didn't think this was Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, okay.
So that could answer, because you're probably right. Unfortunately, they might not be old enough. So this may have, but you know, the, my question was, I did not, I don't know if I missed it, but it wasn't in my packet.
No.
I can't find a proposal.
No other information.
So that, that would help.
That's part of my confusion, I guess, not knowing what this club's about.
I think it sounds, and she's a fantastic biology teacher. I'm sure it's great, but we didn't get, it wasn't in our packet. Or it wasn't in mine.
We'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
You think it's Habitat for Humanity? Okay. Do you want to table the motion or approve it today? What, where is the board?
They can still probably keep meeting and organizing and everything without our approval, right? But maybe we should table it. I don't know.
Barb?
Table.
Okay, so we will table this for our next meeting and wait for more information, I guess. All right, thank you. Textbook Approval. You have two textbooks, they are listed in your agenda, and at our last meeting, we had teachers who were here presenting those textbooks to us, and they have been available for the board to check them out at District Office and also at the public library, for anybody from the public or board members to go and check them. Did we, well, may I have a motion, please, that the textbook listed in your agenda be approved?
Second.
Did we have any comments?
We did not.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments? Board member? No? All right, all those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's Remarks. I have none at this time. Thank you. Unfinished Business. Special Election Ballot. Area Two Board of Director Election, 2013. Nomination for New York State School Board Association Area Two Director closed on December 7th, 2012. Official nominations have been received containing the names of Rodney George from Avon School District and Joyce Leiki, Wayne School District. Each New York State School Board Association member's school board located within Area Two, acting at a regular or special meeting, is entitled to cast one vote for one candidate from its respective area. The official ballot must be returned to NISBA office no later than 5:00 PM on Wednesday, January 9th, 2013. Accordingly, the following motion is in order. We, okay, I guess we need a roll call.
Or a show of hands.
Or a show of hands.
How many would like to vote for each, and then the majority will be voted on in the next, in the, in the resolution.
Okay. So, board member, who would like to vote for Rodney George? All right. None, that, no hands that I see. Board members, who would like to vote for Joyce Leiki? All right. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, that the Penfield Central School District Board of Education supports Ms. Joyce Leiki for the Area Two directorship for the term of office beginning January 9th, 2013 through December 31st, 2015?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
We have to do it again.
All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have no new business at this time. May I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:00, 10:00 PM? All those in favor? Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you.